Welcome to One on One. I'm Greg Bassett, your host for the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. It's a big day here at PAC 14. They're all big because it's election season. And we are continuing our interviews with candidates for the different county and state offices. Today, we're doing school board. And we have the president, the current president of the school board, who's running at large for the first time historic in our county. The school board is going to be elected by the public. Don Fitzgerald, welcome, Don.
Good morning. Glad to be here.
Now, you weren't excited about this elective thing, but you're right in it in here. You're running hard.
Well, I am. You know, I think people that know me over the years, I'm not a politician. But my passion is for the youth of this community. It has been for probably 40 years. And the way that system was set up, I was afraid that we wouldn't have anybody on the board. They knew how things work. So that's why I put my name in the hat. And hopefully, the people of this county will like me.
Well, I'm not supposed to say stuff like this, but I've watched you closely for many years. And you are an advocate for these schools and for our kids. You stand up to county councilmen. You stand up to the county executive. I've seen you challenge superintendents before. You're all over this thing.
Well, you know, it's a passion for me. You know, I come from my family. My mother only had an eighth grade education. And she instilled me. She said, "Son, you're going to graduate." And that stuck with me. And I didn't have the money to go to college. I went to work for EI DuPont in 1965. Served in Vietnam. And came home and wanted to give back to this community because it's been so good to me. Joined the Optimists Club in 1981. And that's when my real involvement with the youth of this community started. And still, I'm still involved. I'm vice president of the Optimists Club. So youth is a big thing. Because in 40 years, it's not going to be Don Fitzgerald. It's going to be these youth we got in school today running this community. And we want to give them the best that we can give them.
Yeah, my first little league team was the Optimists, sponsored by Optimists a long time ago, my minor league team, pony league too, actually, all of them. And you've been a coach, baseball and stuff. And I just found out about you last spring. You're the man I see out there on the field all the time at Bennett, out there making repairs to the field.
That's correct. You know, I started at the old Bennett on Lonely Road. Went to the new field. I coached with my daughter, but I think the main reason she's got me on the coaching staff is because I do the field preparation. I think that's the main reason.
She does softball for Bennett and field hockey.
And field hockey. And, you know, she's very, she's like myself, very into the youth of this community. Very passionate about the underprivileged. She really is. She would go to extra mile. I'm not saying we don't have a lot of other teachers that do the same, because we do. We have a community with 76% of our students at risk. Figure that.
Right.
We've got 15,000 students.
It's a lot of work to do.
It's a lot of work to do, a lot of challenges. Not every student is going to be the same, you know? And so, we have to figure a way to get them on the right. My biggest thing is safety. You know, we got knuckleheads. But I want it to be a safe place for the students and the teachers. Salaries for the teachers. I want to do the best that I can do to get them the best salary, realizing the county has control over what monies we have. But yeah, we don't, county and I don't always agree. But I will say, in the last two years, there's been a 360 in this community. From the county executive to the county council, willing, not always giving us what we want, but at least willing to listen.
Right.
And to me, it's not about them or us, it's about the kids. We don't have the money, fine and dandy. But there's some money sitting there that we should be using, so.
I enjoy when you're at the table with them and they want to be hard with you and you won't let them.
Well.
You remind them what it's all for.
Exactly right. And, you know, I don't like, years ago, I was president of the union at DuPont. If you talk to some of those managers, they'll say, "Well, Fitzgerald was a hard, hard person." But I mellowed, I mellowed, but I still don't get pushed around. You know, back in the 70s, I was very active in the community for the Mobile Home Workers Association. And I had a lot of challenges with the county back in those days. And I said, "Okay, you know, we'll move forward." And I've moved forward. But Susan interviewed me with my voice, probably about three or four years ago. And the question that sticks with me all the time, she said, "Mr. Fitzgerald, aren't you bitter about your situation?" And my answer then and now is, "Where does that get you?"
Right.
"Where does that get you?" I could be better. My dear, what I've been through the last 16 years, yeah, I could be very better. But it don't get you nowhere.
You get a lot of credit for hiring our superintendent, who's very dynamic. People seem to like her. And you're an advocate for her ideas, this vision thing she's got. I forget what it's called.
2022.
Yeah. Universal pre-K, better funding for teachers, and working on the graduation rate.
Right. The pre-K, I will say that the county did give extra money. And that's, that hadn't happened in many months.
Since 2006, yeah.
Right. The Greater, not the Greater, Wycomico County Education Foundation has been formed. And they supported five of those pre-K classrooms, tech packages, which is another reason, you know, the Greater Salisbury Committee and the Chamber are working together to help us get what we can't get other ways. It's a great partnership.
And how great is that? I mean, the business leaders in the community came together. They want better education as a draw for make our county better. And they're out there raising money. They just had an event over the weekend that was well-attended. And you're right, they're buying these packs that are going to help the kids.
First thing, and you talk to the realtors in the community, the first thing when somebody's moving in here for Purdue Hospital or anybody else, first thing I want to know is, "How's your schools?" And that will dictate where they move in this county.
Right.
You know, I want all schools on the same level. Getting there is a challenge, but we're working on it.
I feel like our schools are pretty good.
They are.
But the reputation is just, I don't think there are any, I think they're as good or better than Worcester County, but everyone talks about how great Worcester County is.
No, first of all, you know, Worcester County don't have as many schools as we've got.
True.
You know, and they got Ocean City with money.
Right.
But our schools are great. We got great teachers, you know? And I, I see them, what they do. But we don't, we get in the limelight when there's a problem. The best thing we've done as a board in the nine years I've been there, we had Paul Butler as our communication person now. You know, people said, "Why'd you do that?" Because we needed communication.
Yeah.
And that's what we heard. We don't get the communication. Well, now, you're getting communication. And we're projecting ourselves to the community in a great way. I mean, I'm sure everybody's had the opportunity to see what we got. We got Facebook. And I don't have all this. Facebook and, and all the other media outlets he's providing, which brings a different venue. And I enjoy it. And I tell people that. So he's the best thing we've done in a long time.
Excellent. How can people get ahold of you as the election's getting closer? They want to call you up and give you a hard time or ask you questions? How can people reach you?
DonFitz64.comcast.net is my email address. Or my cell number is 410-430-3065. You know, and I'll listen. That's one thing I learned, to be a good listener, especially with a voice now. Sometimes I listen a lot more than I should be, but, you know, but I, you know, if you got a problem, the only thing I ask is, you know, be polite. You know, I don't, I don't deal too well with the angered person, you know? But I'll listen to any problem anybody has, because we're not perfect.
Right.
You know, the school system's not perfect, but we try to be.
He's Don Fitzgerald. He's running for election for the county school board at large. He's the sitting incumbent president of the school board. And we're just thrilled that he was here today. Thanks for being here, Don.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Joining me now in the studio is Michael Murray. He's an incumbent member of the school board. He's running at large. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So you're a lifelong educator?
Lifelong educator. Born here on the eastern shore. Actually, grew up over on the east side of Salisbury. Beaver Run, Y Junior, Y Senior, graduating in '76. Had a parent that was an educator for 40 years.
Wow. So why do you want to be on the school board? I mean, you've given your life already. Isn't that enough?
No. I, to be honest with you, I chose the education profession and started my first year teaching over at Delmar, at the junior, senior high on the Delaware side. So before you know it, the years went on. 35, I was a teacher, vice principal, and then principal of two schools. Howard Tianus and the Richard Allen School at the same time.
And Howard Tianus School has a reputation as a really good school. There's a, it's kind of a tough school, I've always heard, at Howard Tianus. But they do great things with the kids.
We do spectacular things. They still do. We did. At Howard Tianus School during my time there as vice principal and then principal, we went on an improvement plan through the state of Delaware. And I'm very pleased to say that we came out of that excellently. We followed everything. We had classrooms in every school, in Indian River School District type thing. We opened a storefront for our children with disabilities and really did well. Very successful. The other school, Richard Allen, was very successful too, was an alternative school.
Right, right. Having been an employee and administrator in the school system, now you're on the school board. What's it like? What's different about that?
The difference is, you're able to help all children and reach out to all the staff, parents, community, and I enjoy that. I've given my entire life to working with children. I enjoy that. I want to be able to continue it. I've been on the school board for one year, was appointed a year ago in September by the Wycomico County Council. And I've, I've learned a lot. I think one of the big things that any school board member should know and learn is you do, you support your superintendent, which we have a wonderful superintendent here in the county. You have to be an open mind about things. People are constantly asking you questions and stopping you and all. And I'm a great listener. I've always had an open-door policy. So I listen and help direct where we can go to solve this issue or concern in any positive way that we can. I love our community of Salisbury, being, you know, born and raised here. I want to see our continued community to continue growing like it is. I like the relationship with our students and parents and community, our government, our business leaders and all, and working close together because our future are our current students and things, as we were when we were in school.
Yeah, talk about that, because some business leaders and others kind of came together here in the last year and a half, would like to see more money spent on education as an economic development tool and for other reasons. That must be a great advantage to have them on your side as you try to improve the school system.
It is. Actually, I am so pleased when our budgets and things came out. Of course, we would have been happier to always have had more. But I often stop and I talk with people about things and all. And the government there, county, was very generous this year. And we certainly hope they will continue. The one comment and concern that I have is, when I get stomped by somebody and they go, "Well, when I was in school."
Right.
That is, that is mine. And I said, "Well, yeah, me too. I'm 60 years old."
Right.
You know? But I said, "I want you to know, times have changed since we were in school." Probably some of the things were still there and during our time in growing up, might have been ignored a little bit. Were not addressed the way they could have been for other reasons. You know, I'm unsure of those reasons. But the demand and our children today is extremely important. And I'm a firm believer that all students, and I emphasize, all students are treated equal and have every opportunity, and our staff has every opportunity, to have the things they need to make it happen. Our society in general is so different than when I grew up and when you grew up. And we have to be able to meet those needs. Safety is a very, very important thing in anything in our world, in our society, but particularly in our schools with our students. I also firmly believe that I get concerned, every child should have a decent meal. I think that's important. Things, as I said, are different. And it takes money to address those issues. So I was very pleased and very grateful and thankful for what our local governments did this year. And our community people, our community has stepped up and really supported our educational system here in Wycomico County.
Yeah, it seems to be a real attitude shift. The county council didn't put a lot up. They put half a million dollars. But it was the first time since 2006. So you could, you could argue that that's progress.
It is progress. And as I've been telling people, you know, small steps make big steps. But for the first time that I've seen in a long time, the county council and the city and the governments, they are starting to realize the importance. And I know with our pre-K program, we were, last fall, we toured one of our, our schools there with the program. And I enjoyed it, of course, being an educator. But I also was extremely pleased to hear and see the acknowledgements of some of our government, community people that were on that tour.
Monumental.
They didn't realize.
It shifted John Cannon's opinion from calling it daycare to realizing how important it was.
I know it did. I know it did. And I talked with John, you know, about that. And it has to happen. If you cannot, and I'm speaking as an educator and as a school board member, you have to catch children at a young age in order to help address some needs or concerns that could come or may be there or will come down the road. That's progress. That's success. And that's what we need. But it does take money to do that.
What are any unique problems that we have that you, with your experience in being on the school board, can help solve?
I think one of the biggest things that I'm thinking of, that I want to work on, is continue bringing our communities together as one, with our children, with our schools. All parents and relatives certainly, you know, recognize and support and love their children and their grandchildren. I think one of the things is bringing them more together with all children. That's my big thing, is emphasizing, all children. And I don't look at a race or nationality or gender being different. And I think when we all start to look in that way, I think we'll see even more success. I know our children will.
I know it frustrates me as an editor, as a community member. I feel like we've got a good school system, but other people in surrounding counties don't know that. Or you get one isolated incident, a teacher and a student will have an interaction that's not appropriate or, you know, some kind of conflict, and it goes out as rumor across the community. How do you guys on the school board fight that and let people know that we do have a pretty good thing going on here?
That's, that's a really great point, Greg. Because sometimes, and of course, no offense to you, but, you know, our media picks up on things like that. And it emphasizes in a domino effect. It is a concern of mine. I think we need to address all the positive things that are happening, because there are a lot of positive things happening. I don't know why. I think sometimes it's second nature. If there's a problem, for some reason, the mind automatically looks to a negative and dwells on it. And I call it domino effect. And it spreads like a virus. But there are so many good things happening. Look on the website, the Wycomico County School Board. There's always something happening every week, every weekend, that involving children and our community needs to come out and support it.
You're out running for reelection. How can people get ahold of you to talk to you, to find out more about you, read about you? Where can we find you?
You can find me on the Wycomico County website. My email is on there, my cellphone, and I'm always available. No problem. I am retired, so I have plenty of time to talk and answer any questions that people might have.
He's Michael Murray. He's running for Wycomico County School Board. He's an incumbent, running the first time in this historic election, and we're thrilled to have you here today, Michael. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Joining me now in the studio is Talana Watson. Talana is running for county school board at large. Welcome.
Thank you.
So why do you want to be on the school board?
Want to be on the school board because I see a need when I look at the youth. I work with the youth at our church. And it first caught my attention in a Bible study class when I was asking a young man to read for me. And I could see that he wasn't reading fluently. And so, I started asking questions. And so, I recognized that there was a concern, an issue. And so, I see a need, and I want it to be a part of a solution and not be a part of a problem by not, by choosing not to do anything.
Right. There's so much focus on education right now in our county and how to pay for it. But you're talking about like a feet-on-the-street kind of thing in terms of how things are going instruction-wise?
Instruction-wise, yes. I believe there are things that we can do and look at that may not necessarily involve funding at this point. The community, there is a part of our community that wants to become involved, that wants to be a part of the student achievement of everyone. Because we recognize that if our students are successful, then our whole community will benefit from it.
Right. We see so much focus from the school board on mentoring, trying to develop that, to get the, what we were talking about, where you have sort of the hands-on kind of thing. What are your thoughts about growing that?
I agree with mentoring. I noticed from observation that we need to attract more males on the teaching level, administrative level. And that's a large part of it with mentoring, to actually have people become more involved with the students on one-to-one relationships. So I see that as being something very important, because the role models are needed.
People talk about, one of the concerns with having an elected school board is that school boards would become political. Do you see that as being a situation? Or is the day-to-day things that the board do so intrinsic in the school's success that politics doesn't really enter?
I see that for those of us who are parents, have been with our children through public education, that we all have the same goal. And that's to see our children academically achieved. And because we all have the same goal, I don't look at it.
Right.
As being political, because we want the best for them.
Right. What problems do you see in the system now that you would like to address? Where you say, "If I was elected, we need to work on this. I need to work on this."
There are two main concerns, well, three, that I have. One is the graduation rate at the 12th grade. Wycomico County is working hard to improve that. But there is an additional piece to that for me. That is that when they graduate, I feel they should graduate with a 12th grade level of proficiency. So that when they take an entrance exam for, whether it be college, university, or just to learn a skill, they can pass it. And that is not happening right now. The other concern.
Yeah, that's one of the little secrets, the transparency secret.
That's one of the little secrets.
That 82%, which the superintendent wants to get to 91. But how are you judged even in that 91? And that's the state standard, but it's not what we all might think that it is.
That's right. They're not where they should be.
Right.
And, and to follow up with that, the foundation that's laid, how we start off, actually determines how we progress and where we end up. So then, that brings us back to how we're starting with the pre-K, universal pre-K, full day for all students, to give them that foundation from pre-K through second grade. So that as those levels, those grades where they're learning how to read, then it switches into third grade where they're reading to learn. So we have to make sure the foundation is solid. So that when they get to the third and fourth grade, they don't get progressively behind and hence, are graduated from the 12th grade and not actually be at that level.
Right. One of the things I've seen about the universal pre-K is when this was first floated about a year ago, we saw some county leaders who were like, "No, we're not going to pay for daycare." They were saying that kind of stuff. But by the end of the year, they all seemed to kind of come around and get it and realize that universal pre-K is much more than daycare. Do you want to talk about that?
It's crucial. Because that's the fundamentals, the foundation for learning the alphabet, the numbers. I know, I have a grandson, as many of us do, at the ages we are. And I look at him and how adept he is when it comes to use of computers. So I recognize that the potential is there. And you start early. You start at one, ages one, two. And starting early, I think the more parents realize that there is a sense of urgency in having to start your children with their education earlier so that they can compete, so that they can stay on target for the academic goals, then the more successful they'll be.
In the last year or so, there's been a push in the business community from local leaders to spend some more on education, to properly fund especially these programs that this superintendent has put forward. How do you feel about that?
I fully support that. And I see, I know why business leaders are interested in recognizing, you know, for some years, I have noticed that there are certain persons that you have relationships with, even in the business community. And I see those persons getting older. And I'm wondering, will there be skilled labor to take their places?
Yeah.
And I, I found out after observation that we're expecting to have a major shortage of skilled laborers in our country. So if there is a problem, however, though, with our graduates passing entrance exams, we have to work as, you know, and do what we can as a community to make sure those future needs of our citizens are going to be met. And unless we participate and have a vested interest in it, it won't be successful for us.
Yeah, one of the changes in education is rather than all of us learning all the same things, the idea that people go into these specialties and they learn what really interests them. So that you've got programs that are very devoted to what you're going to be good at. And that's a great change from what we're all used to.
Well, I can remember being, when we were in school, we had the vocational, technical school.
Right. Which now is so advanced out of Parkside, the STEM programs. It is nothing like what you and I used to see.
That's what I, that's what I understand. It's nothing like it. But that's good, because there are more focuses on other professions, even teaching, so that we can groom educators.
Right.
From right here.
Right. It seemed to be like, if you weren't going to make it academically, then you'd go to VOTEC. But now, it's not that way at all.
No.
It's, people want to go to the vocational, technical stuff, the STEM programs.
Right.
Because it's really hard, and they're going to succeed in an area that's really important to the overall community.
To the overall community. And I looked at, I went to a Board of Education meeting, and I looked at the mission statement for Wycomico County, which is to educate and provide a set of skills to produce responsible, productive citizens. So when thinking about what our mission statement is, it all follows that there would be a partnership with the community to make sure that those students were coming out at proficiency so they could meet the needs.
Right.
And that we will be able to, to retain our students in our county so that they will live and raise families. It, it's much better for us than seeing certain ones leave our community, because our school system is not where it should be.
How can people get ahold of you to ask you more questions, to find out more about you?
Well, they can go to my website, WatsonForStudents. Or they can call me. If they go on my website, I have a Facebook page, WatsonForStudents. So I'm very accessible.
Talana Watson, thanks for being here today.
You, thank you for the invitation.
I'm Greg Bassett from the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. Another special election edition of One on One here on PAC 14. You can see all of these interviews on YouTube. We have, have them archived there. You can get to that by, from a link on the PAC 14 website, or go to YouTube to the PAC 14. get to that by, from a link on the PAC-14 website, or go to YouTube, to the PAC-14 section on YouTube, and watch all these interviews, um, a lot of great information out there to help you decide who to vote for. First Shore Federal is proud to support PAC-14 and One-on-One. We'd encourage every business to support PAC-14 and, and pick a program and support it, and let's make a difference.